Ready?
Want to call this public hearing to order. It's Tuesday, December the second at three P M. Today's public hearing is convened of the provisions of the Local Government Act of British Columbia to hear submissions relative to the two T U P temporary use permit. Two zero two five zero zero three. This is the public's opportunity to make representations to council. All persons who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed temporary use permit shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters in the proposed by law. I would ask that those members of the public who wish to speak to commence your address to this council by clearly stating your name. Counsel not debate the matters of a proposed by law or temporary use permit with individual citizens, but council members may ask questions of you following your presentation. The main function of this public hearing is to listen to your views. No one will be or should be feel discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. Today's public hearing is for the temporary use permit number two zero two five zero zero three. If approved, will permit short term nightly rentals at two four two four Fairways Drive. Staff, do we have any?
No.
Insuspitions?
No.
Does anybody uh from the public wish to speak on this matter? A call for a second time for input from the public. And for a third and final time. There being no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed. Call this regular council meeting of the Sun Peaks Mount Resort Municipality to order. It is three oh one on Tuesday, December the second and acknowledge that we live, work and play in the subject territories of the Shrek people. We have any lead items to introduce?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I believe uh we discussed adding under new business. Uh, we'll text for municipality to send a letter and support you the MS position regarding bill two sixteen. You want to add that under?
New business, so. Letter. And that's M two sixteen, right? Okay. Hey, uh can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Counsel Kimball, seconded by Counsel Dyke, all in favor? Is he on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm on, sorry.
Yeah, you can just give us, that'd be great, thank you. Um, uh, under four adoption of minutes, four point one, we have the regular council meeting minutes of November the eighteenth. Um, can I get a motion to adopt the minutes?
So move.
Right, yeah, and seconded by Counsel Reiken. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
You. Under five, business rising from the public hearing. Um, it's something. So five point one, we have a temporary use permit application, T U P two zero two five zero zero three. Uh, direct operator wish to speak to this.
Uh, yeah, I can give a summary of citizens for the temporary between uh two four two four Fairways Drive. Um, as discussed in the report, there is a bit of an issue with uh the G F A in the property, but we are working with the point if that's all, I don't think it needs to impact there uh. Sweet T U P approval, we're working our way through that. I did include um in the conditions of the permit to include that that uh G F A stipulation, just to make sure everyone's covered.
Good.
Uh. They would probably not start construction until the new year or until a couple months into the new year, just getting contractors lined up and working on it.
True.
Uh, I'm comfortable managing that building permit side of things. Uh, they've had a, we did the walkthrough, the site safety walkthrough, no issues. Provided a uh parking layout showing the traffic when they can uh park the five vehicles outside. They have a snow uh starting area, so we are definitely in uh buying that the T M P to be heard.
Excellent, thank you. So the recommendation, subject to the public input of the public um hearing, which we already have had, is the council authorization to the temporary use permit. T U P two zero two five zero zero three or two four two four Fairways Drive. Subject of the following conditions in accordance with Sun Peaks Mount Resort Municipality. Can I get a move on the motion? Uh, Counsel Dyke, seconded by Counsel Timmell. Any questions or discussion at this point? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Reiken. Motion is carried. Beyond the six, six point one. We have a presentation from Y K Y K A Link Alliance.
No.
Welcome.
Just from.
You can come up front if you like, that'd be great.
Whatever, wherever you want.
Yeah.
I'll I'll be here.
Yeah, that's good, great. Yeah, and I believe Janelle's got slides up for you, so.
Okay. Uh, thanks much for having me here today. My name's Beverly DeSantis. Uh, some of you I might have met before. I was previously C V O Tourism Counters. And now I do work as a consultant on several projects uh in and around the region. Um, including project manager facility for the Y K A Link Alliance. Joining me today is Naomi uh from Tourism on Sun Peaks, Colin from Tourism Sun Peaks, and Jim from Vantage Airport and the Y K A Airport. Uh, I'm here today to introduce you to Y K A Link, which is a regional alliance that grew up a round table held in December of twenty twenty four. Now, the idea was simple. It was to bring regional partners together to strengthen air access, build tourism pavilions and support economic development across our connected communities. The result is a collaborative model that aligns destinations, regional districts, and industry partners under one shared vision and one unified approach. Uh, today's just an awareness update. We're not asking for any money. We're not asking for any action or decision. It's simply to give you a clear picture of what Y K A Link is and why it matters and how it will benefit Sun Peaks along with the line region. Uh, Y K A Link. Oh, next, okay, yeah. Um, Y K A Link is the first of its kind alliance in British Columbia. It's set apart uh that isn't just a tourism partnership. It's an innovative regional model that brings together airports, municipalities, regional uh districts, tourism organizations, and provincial partners under one unified strategy. Our core mandate is to attract and grow airline service, elevate and align regional visitor experiences, and open the door for new destination development opportunities that support the work that's already happening in many communities. This collaborative approach allows us to highlight signature regional strengths, bundle experiences across communities, and present a much stronger, more compelling case to airlines. Y K A Link essentially brings a unified leadership to something that has already that has always been shared work. It creates consistency, it elevates regional messaging, and showcases the region as a cohesive and competitive destination to investments, airline, and visitors. Next slide, please. The reason Y K A Link was created is the opportunity to align directly with Destination B C's iconic strategy, which is the province's central framework for tourism competitiveness. For our region, two major iconics intersect here. Nature's Heartland, which includes Sun Peaks, Wells Gray, and the Caribou, and then Rhythm Forest Rockies, which is an international gateway corridor along the highway from east to west from the coast of British Columbia to Alberta. There are potentially two to three others that will cross into our areas where we can actually market into such as Northern B C, Okanagan, and Southern B C through highways ninety seven. These iconic guy, uh these these iconic guides link on investment and product development, storytelling, and market growth, which is a huge opportunity for multiple regions. For Sun Peaks and the wider area, the iconic's alignment means greater visibility, stronger narrative, consistency for airlines and media, improved corridor development, support, and a clearer path for communities to align with provincial priorities. By forming Y K A Link, the region can now speak to airlines with the weight of these iconic's behind it, showing that our corridors both provincially and northly internationally competitive. Next slide, please. The mandate of Y K A Link is guided by a vision in our strategic playbook. It's to position Counters Airport as a central gateway to the B C's interior visitor economy and strengthen air access, economic opportunity, and quality of life across our interconnected regions. Our core objectives include air access and route development, build airline business cases using regional data, marketing insights, and a unified message, and a destination readiness, align infrastructure, workforce needs, signage, transportation, visitor services across communities. Experiences, storytelling, using shared narratives connected to iconics to elevate our collective identity and visitor appeal, and stakeholder collaboration, creating a leadership-driven governance model involving municipalities, regional district partners, D M Os, indigenous partners, and industries. Measurement and continuous improvement while we track well-read visitor behavior and partner engagement and economic outcomes from the system. This is not about adding any new work. It's about aligning great work with strategic outcomes that are happening all across the region. Then next slide. Sun Peaks is one of the strongest drivers of regional demand for air travel. Airlines repeatedly mention Sun Peaks as the major anchor for route viability. Better access means more consistent and reliable travel options for visitors who are stronger winter and summer season performance, easier recruitment and mobility for seasonal workers, stronger market access for international travelers, more accessible group conflict than tour operator opportunities. Residents will also benefit from more better parking and improved connectivity for both business and personal travel. Expanded air access strengthens services amenities and regional stability, especially in shoulder seasons, which supports businesses, families, and long-term community health. Next slide. Y K A Airport is located where several major tourism corridors meet. Meet Heartland, Rainforest Rockies, the Gold Rush Trail, and key interior corridors. Rare advantage, a diverse year-round tourism demand base. Along with tourism and airline growth, Y K A Link opens doors for new partnerships and uh now opportunities, including rail collaborations with um organizations such as Rocky Mountain here and by via rail, interprovincial alignment from Alberta and Northern B C flows, complementary mobility networks using coach shuttle and E V routes, partnerships with outdoor recreation, culture, indigenous tourism, and sports sectors. These opportunities expand markets, create new itineraries, and strengthens the region's competitiveness and resilience. And next slide. Y K A Link brings together one of the strongest cross-regional partnerships in British Columbia. Core investment partners include Destination British Columbia, Counters Airport, Vantage Group, Tourism Sun Peaks, Tourism Counters, the Thompson Nicola Regional District, the Thompson Okanagan Tourism Association, and the Caribou Chocolat tourism association. They're all supported by local governments, indigenous partners, regional districts, operators, and community organization. This depth of alignment is exactly what airlines look for. It shows stability, collaboration, and commitment. It also ensure Sun Peaks' interests and priorities are always represented. Excellent. So what we're asking for today, and it's only uh for awareness, is there's no funding or requests or decision required. We're simply inviting council to be aware that we exist as Y K A Link Alliance, that this regional initiative outside of your community, sharing the information and help Y K A Link Alliance at events, gatherings, and development meetings, support our alignment and collaborations opportunities arise, and consider future endorsements as the initiative progresses. Your voice and awareness helps strengthen the region's position when speaking to airlines, government, and industry partners. So thank you for your time today. I appreciate you having us here, and we're really excited to uh move this forward with such great partners as Sun Peaks Municipality of Tourism. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments to be translated?
I think this is fantastic, and as an economic development practitioner, I think it's fabulous for the region. Like, there's there's no negative to this at all. I'm I'm curious, you know, we've had airlines come and go in the past because of ridership or passenger numbers.
Sure.
They sort of seem to say it's not, they just can't get that. So that all of this sort of conglomerate of marketing, the hope is that this will increase that and that these airlines will come and hopefully stay rather than come and leave sort of consistently.
Right.
Yeah, which is, I think it's it's obviously fabulous for tourism, but I think it's fabulous for communities in general, because you're also going to get people who can move here without feeling isolated. They can come and go when needed.
Yeah.
And uh, so I think it's, again, fabulous. And maybe they'll extend a runway or.
Maybe. We have the right kick, one of us. You know, we had a, a lot of the airlines and Jim, you know, pop in your expertise, but a lot of airlines come in the seasonal testing first. They're going to come in during, summer, they're going to come in during specific time periods for a specific period of time. We had one such a route added uh last year or this year was WestJet between Edmonton and Counters. And this alliance group works so closely with WestJet, with Edmonton, with Edmonton Airport, so that from both sides, because the plane has to know both coming and going. And WestJet was very impressed with the collaboration and the power and the strength and the coordination by which we approached it, that it actually will foster further and greater conversi- conversations, knowing that it's not just Tourism Sun Peaks promoting it or whatever. There's a a a whole region that is that is behind any sort of airline expansion in the area, which carries a lot of weight, I would suggest, within within the industry.
Absolutely. A common voice for an airline to talk to. They don't have, no one has been with, talked to Tourism Sun Peaks, Tourism Counters, Thompson Okanagan, all those groups. But we get them together for them and can speak to us, and keep that or to me directly in the midst of the group. So it definitely is a head of power to, you know, uh, numbers for sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just had a quick question. I know you didn't come with an ask, but I believe, uh, just kind of reading through your presentation and thank you. The the one government entity that was mentioned was the T N R D, and I know you have strong partner up here with Tourism Sun Peaks, but is there a role beyond seeing you at days like today for the municipality to play? And something like this, not that I'm going to make promises, because bandwidth is always an issue, but I'm just I'm just wondering in that in that government scenario, is there a role for us to play to help support that more than just kind of being in a report or?
You know, thanks, Mayor. I I think that as we move along and conversations are had with airlines and partners and destination organizations, we might be back in front of you at some point with specifics that are relevant to Sun Peaks or how you could help support Tourism Sun Peaks or the airport or this group. Um, right now, we just, we really just need to get the word out. It is all about key messaging that we are aligned, we're serious, we have resources, we have decision makers at the table, and we have the cooperation of municipalities um all across central British Columbia to make sure that when your airline or business or destination development project is coming to this area, that we are all pushing on that same thing, so we're all working together. So at this point, um, we'll never turn down resources. We'll never turn down anything. If something comes up in this room and you say, you know, let's get these folks back in, let's talk, and with that opportunity, would love to hear about it. One of the strategies I be caressing Colin and Naomi about is we are very short of R V space and uh R V campgrounds. And and uh so I understand this in your master plan, but this is going to be a very big initiative at the airport, we're hoping. Uh, also through Destination British Columbia, through the iconic's, as I've been driving iconic routes for both international and domestic travelers.
Mm-hmm.
We need places to put them with proper uh R V facilities.
Yeah.
With um with the resources that that come in there. So those are, those are things that I think that when you're talking about your master development plans within Sun Peaks municipalities, consider how else you can support more, how we can support what we were doing. And uh, I think that's, that's the ask today, is just to be aware that we're here, we're excited to build destination that will attract air capacity. Those will foster those conversations. And D B C is a huge investor into this, and they're very interested in how this group works together so that this can be translated potentially all across British Columbia, but other other smaller municipalities.
Yeah, I understood uh recently a regional district meeting, um Counsel Sari and Newsetter were talking to me about the the R V hub. That sounds like a really cool idea. I don't think it has the opportunity to kind of um tap into. You see a lot of strong European market that likes to land here in Canada and rent a motorhome or and do the travel thing.
Well, I think the greatest opportunity for Sun Peaks is that when you get international R V travelers coming through, they're not pulling vehicles. So to put them in a place where that wants food, this ability, um, destination entertainment experiences, a a location and destination such as Sun Peaks is very attractive.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
We'll be on a report, seven point one. I don't have any, does anybody have anything today? Okay, good. And we move on to seven point two. Staff reports, first one, seven point two one. C E O Campbell.
Sure. You're meeting. Got that meeting, Mr. Hunt. That didn't happen yet.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is a reminder for public and council of our annual public office closure, so the exposure to the offices of um, is at two P M on December twenty fourth uh until Friday, January second. Um, essential services will still be operating during that time, so utilities, bylaw, public works, fire department. Uh, also a reminder that the majority of our municipal services, payments, applications, municipal information, we can still access on our website during that time. I'm assuming you mean you'll be back in the office on Monday? On Friday. Hold it. Friday. Or just reopening just for the Friday? Yes, yeah. Okay. I just read that, I'm like I mean. Just seemed, just seemed a bit odd to open up for the one day. Well, it's it, I mean, that that's, I mean, uh, most municipalities follow that structure where they open the day, the next business day after. Yeah, okay. So. We will be in on Friday. Okay. Unless someone's taking vacation. Oh. Was that?
You have a motion?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a typo or I understood, it just. I mean, I'm, I assume some staff.
I think Kelly was going to offer to man the office, so that's.
I will, why not?
All right. It's not going to be busy enough over the whole.
I'm not doing anything on January second.
Yeah, absolutely. Recovering from multiple dinners tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, just an update on the health center. So we have been and we will continue to collaborate and work with Dr. Nowinski on reopening the clinic. Uh, currently a draft agreement is being worked on. We know it may not seem or feel um like it, but as one of my staff pointed out this morning, we're actually moving through a really complex process quicker than would happen in any other situation. Um, so just want to emphasize and reiterate that getting the health center reopened as soon as possible remains a priority. Uh, twenty twenty six budget uh preparation, five-year financial plan. Staff have been working on the twenty twenty six preliminary budget led by our Director of Finance. We have brought in external um support uh through a third party this year, consulting company Pacific Postal Consulting. Uh, our finance department and our budget preparation is essentially a one-woman show, and so we felt that it was really important to bring in some additional um support uh to support Director of Finance through that process. We do have a committee of the whole budget workshop uh tentatively scheduled, actually now it is scheduled for Friday, December nineteenth, uh, not at three P M, it's actually at one P M.
Yeah, okay, one P M.
And that will, an agenda will be posted. It will be open to the public um as usual, and the the agenda will be available a few days in advance, and it will be in the Sun Peaks. Uh, community grant need applications. So that process is now open with applications available on our website. There's also some information, including guidelines and criteria, and applications uh will be accepted until January twelfth, twenty twenty six.
Eight seven point two two.
Yeah, I think I have to, as a rotarian, I think I need to excuse myself.
Page two, no, no, you're okay. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, we would know better than words.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be a lot louder, yeah. Okay.
Also, to this bridge, it would be fairly straightforward. I think most of council is aware of the background and history with respect to these funds. Uh, it certainly makes a lot more sense for the community organization to be the holder uh and distributor of these funds. And so the request is that the municipality transfer those to the Rotary Club of Sun Peaks, and there is a subcommittee um that will, as part of the Rotary that we manage, and distribute those funds.
It was motion for the council through the transfer of the Sun Peaks to be helped funds to the Rotary Club of Sun Peaks to be used for a few food security networks within the community, moved by Counsel Reiken, seconded by Counsel Dyke. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is moved. Thanks, dude.
We need to add here what the amount of fun, the amount of funds, is that important? Do you want, do you want that or no?
The dollar figure. I know the rough number, I know the exact number.
I remember reading it, and it's not six, seven hundred and something, isn't it? No, it's.
No.
No.
Where'd I read that in?
It's like twenty-four thousand dollars, give or take.
Yeah.
It was just, and and just for some, 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 you know, the here in the public setting, but I had a meeting with Linda and also with uh um Julie in her role as our Rotary number is just this has been kind of sitting and being kind of ignored, and it hasn't been being managed, utilized to its full effect. Mary Rain had provided some support where Rotary had done some work over the last couple of years. Um, but it was just, he's gone back to the original donators many, many times and and gotten that message that just continue to use it for this purpose in the community. Uh, and Rotary was prepared to create this subcommittee and really get on top of managing on a daily basis and making sure that uh that really there's no, nobody's falling through the gap, so to speak, and that being utilized, so. Much better managed and better utilized than their hands than it has been ours. Okay. Okay, seven point two three. Direct operator wish to speak to this temporary use permit?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so uh, here most of you are just parking use for the uh field lot back there. Couple things I want to clarify. Number one is that I have a plan to keep it as a green space year round. It's supposed to be used as open pool parking in winter and excess parking for T S B events in summer for very specific limited events. Um, they don't want to ruin the field, they want to keep it at the same current standard in spring, summer, and fall. And it will only be daytime groups, so there can be overnight parking, there will be um any tearing up the green space, putting gravel as far as this new permit goes. The field will still be there. It can still be used as a field for most of spring, summer, and fall. Um, they just feel that they can definitely use the spaces of full parking in winter, and then they would feel it will help their Tourism Sun Peaks events in summer for the the handful of times they can do that.
Excellent, thank you. So the recommendation is that council authorize distribution of noticement, tend to consider a temporary use permit number T U P two zero two five zero zero four, that for the property three, 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 five Village Place as sole attachment A. Any move or? Counsel Dyke, seconded. Counsel Gillespie, any further discussion?
Um, I would like to know, has there been any plan or commitment um to maintain or reset the field after vehicle use in the wintertime or after events like potable, like filling or reseeding or anything like that? Has that been part of such conversations?
Yeah, I've had meetings and and discussions with the team there. And we could go back and forth and put this in the T U P. The thing is, there's really no current mechanism to hold up to any standard other than our good neighbor bylaw, which is weeds and and noxious. So they're maintaining the field as is, and they're basically just doing that as a community space and providing that their own way, and they don't want to cause issues that will impact that use. Okay, so they've committed as far as just in in our meetings and everything, maintaining the space as is, and I think we can manage that with them.
Just um directed on, so so just to understand, is it talks in there about potentially not being used during high fire season and grass? Um, tall brass, but under the old, I don't just refresh my memory, I may be wrong here, but their property, we were maintaining the grass, is that correct? And we cutting it?
There was.
Being treated as a so-called playfield?
Yeah, there's a handshake agreement between the maintenance that just seemed to, um, we can't find anything.
Okay.
Laying out exactly what's been agreed to. So, um, they have gone over the maintenance part of it with their, basically their uh.
The landscape team or?
Yeah.
So is the intent then, I guess, could Okay, so is the intent then, I guess, cause like when we look ahead, like I'm assuming in the winter, I'm gonna see a pretty steady use of it once we get. Deep gauze and see, but if it's frozen, so you're really parking the top of hard snow. Come summer, we're talking what, half a dozen weekends potentially, where we're talking deep volume, T S B conference centerment. In between that, then I'm assuming in the plan will be, if it starts to grow.
Yeah, yeah, maintain access.
That was a valid question, anybody else there?
Mister Mayor, if I may. I'm just, just through to staff, so so I'm assuming before we distribute. The notice of intent, we're going to actually put together the conditions for the temporary use permit, is that correct? And and if that's.
Put together.
The actual wording.
Sorry, go ahead.
The actual wording of the temporary use permit. Cause right now, one of the conditions is that. Sun Peaks Resort maintains. The current standard in the spring, summer and fall.
Uh I. The conditions laid out were kind of the ones I was working on, but if council feels they don't want a little bit more details, please, we can definitely do that. Uh I can reach back out to S P R and get um. Well, I'm gonna put something that council wants and then make sure that S P R will actually agree to it.
So just to follow up, just to follow up, Mister Mayor, so. Has S P R agreed to that as a condition of the use? Like we're being, we're being asked to approve the temporary use permit, so they've agreed to this, all, my only reference was, was that. It is a condition, when we distribute the notice to the neighborhood for the public hearing. The neighborhood should be able to see the wording for the temporary use permit, not just this report, so.
Right, okay, yeah, I I will definitely do that.
Okay. Councillor Reiken, that's good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, motion is carried. Okay, moving on to number eight, new business, so um we've got a, looking for a motion, um how do we want to word this, C E O Campbell? Is the letter support regarding bill M two sixteen to the U B C M?
I believe it.
How's the wording gonna be?
So as this council is aware, there's been a lot of concern among local governments about this proposed um. Act and so U B C M has uh formulated a position and they have submitted that position and so I believe that council would be submitting a letter in support of U B C M's. Position on the professional lines act.
Is everybody kind of, everybody around the table is understanding what what they're proposing with the position that they've taken?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a little bit of back and forth, I wasn't sure if we were just gonna write a letter supporting their position or write a letter saying this is our position. Neither is a difference, it's.
What's our feeling, is it something that?
That's a, that's a council's discretion, but from my perspective, I believe U B C M has. Uh has articulated what local governments are feeling and so you you see a mix of both, but you see a lot of local governments that are submitting letters in some. But in support of what U B C M has put forward and um or in opposition of the bill that's being put forward, so.
I guess just kind of thinking in terms of large municipality versus smaller, we better off to put our voice with U B C M versus sending our own.
I just kind of feel it's a bit stronger message to say this is our position than just supporting.
And then just what we do then, C E O, we just copy U B C M on that?
Yeah, or you'll see later on that there is a piece of correspondence um from another local government, I believe, spreading their concerns regarding the bill and so. Council feels that they share similar concerns, there are a number of correspondence pieces of correspondence, some of them didn't make it on um our agenda cutoff. Uh that have come forward to another municipality, but there are a number of letters relating right now from other local governments expressing the same concerns essentially.
Mister Mayor, if I might.
Yeah, go ahead, councillor Reiken.
Uh mister, Mister Mayor, I, you know, I think the the U B C M paper that went forward to government is fairly comprehensive, they are strongly urging the government not to advance the legislation. And and they talk, um I think with an expert's view on the implications of what this legis- legislation uh will do and how it um. It um would impact low local government autonomy relative to the development approval process, so. Rather than try and create a flowery letter where we profess to. Understand all of those implications, I I would be more inclined to support a motion and in fact, I would make that motion that we. Support um U B C M uh in their views of not having the government not advance this legislation and taking the appropriate time to consult. Um uh on legislation where it has significant impacts for local government. And I'd be prepared to advance the motion that way.
So you're making that motion then?
Yes.
And I'll be second, councillor Kimball, discussion?
I'm happy to support either way, I I mean, I'm happy to support either one, but I just wasn't sure.
Okay, so vote on that, uh all in favor of the motion to send a letter of support to U B C M on the opposition to bill M two sixteen?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Or just we support. Send it to the provincial government, not, we're not gonna send it to U B C M, we're gonna send it to the provincial government declaring our support.
Correct.
Was that your position, councillor Reiken?
Uh yes, it was, and and I think we should reference the fact that we support. U B C M's recommendation to not not advance the legislation.
Okay, so. Yeah, nitpicky, but we're sending to the government.
So we're sending a letter directly to the province. And then but referencing the the. The uh what's been sent forward from U B C M and then copying U B C M on it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, awesome, I will be in favor, perfect. Okay, under nine correspondence, so we have uh correspondence from uh small representation representatives letter, this is our new member of U B C M. Board of Directors uh that's come through, who's also councillor of the village of Nikus. Um that's Aiden, and then we also have uh nine point two, uh as it was referenced, we have correspondence regarding bill uh M two sixteen. Um from the mayor of the city of Pitt Meadows, can I get a motion to. Accept the correspondence by councillor, the last be seconded by councillor Kimball, all in favor? Okay.
Yes.
Stunned, number ten, questions from the public, any questions online? No, anybody in the audience? No. Good. Look at this body. Um we're gonna close this meeting on the Community Charge, section ninety one C, labor relations and other employee relations. Um and uh. And a motion to close the meeting. And my councillor, the last be seconded by councillor Die, all in favor?
Yes.